All right, we'll call the meeting to order. It is March 5th, 2025. Call the meeting to order at 6:30. Any agenda adjustments? Okay, none. We'll go ahead and approve the meeting and hearing notes. We have meeting notes from February 5th. Anybody wants to make a motion to accept the February 5th regular meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the regular.
Okay.
Minutes so mentioned.
Second?
A second.
Okay. So anybody, whoever, if anybody's ready, we can make a motion. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's do the same thing with the hearing minutes.
I mean, would that the hearing minutes be accepted?
Okay, second? Anybody?
Second.
Second.
Oh, second.
Second. All right, any discussion? Any comments? Nope. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is passed. I guess the January, Miguel did send them to me, but they got buried. I guess they are sent to the town office.
Yeah, they were sent, I sent them to you and Jen, but you were the one who told me that they, you couldn't open it, so I resent it.
Yep.
And I never heard back.
Okay, pretty sure I was able to open it. But we'll just go ahead and our April meeting, we can approve those. Okay, next is here citizens. We don't have any present. Jason is here to kind of go over our latest subdivision draft regulations. Does anybody need a, got a hard copy of them here? Basically, we just compiled the changes. Maureen compiled the changes from the last meeting.
Did Maureen have one?
Yep. Yep, she has one.
Let me make sure I got the latest.
Oh, yeah. Okay. They should have, well, the ones in the, from the town, they don't have a color copier, but the changes should be underlined. Like, first changes are, well, the page numbers and then section 1.2 purpose. So I guess, Jason, do you have any comments or any questions?
You know, most of it looks pretty good. I was going through it earlier today. And so I haven't had a lot of time with it, but it looks like there are a couple of comments where you wanted to talk a little bit more about some details, and I had a few questions.
Sure.
So is it, should we just kind of go through it?
Yeah, we could.
Yeah. I noticed there was a comment about, you know, discussing minor versus major classification. So I think what I had understood from many months ago was minor was going to be sort of not more than two lots, and major would be more than that, three or more. But I know we had talked about different numbers even before that. So I just want to make sure we talk that through and make sure this is what you'd want it to be.
Sure. Let's see, that would be on page?
Page four, sorry. Under two, section 2.2.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. So again, the idea was, as I understood it, minor was going to be kind of easy. It would be like the administrative person here, who's yet to be determined, would be able to approve those, so kind of easy process.
Right.
Everything else would have to go through the planning commission. So we wanted to have an easy process for smaller stuff, and whether two lots is the right number. I just want to make sure there's any, you know, if there's any discussion about that or anything else about minor versus major, I want to just be clear on that.
Right. I think the history, did we at one time have a three-lot minimum for minor?
I don't remember.
Does anybody remember?
I think it wasn't, and we lowered it to two.
I think we discussed it. I don't know what.
I think it was higher at one point, and then we lowered it to two. But again, whatever works for you all. You can set that number at five, at four, at, you know, whatever really works for you. At some point, it gets more complicated, and it's probably better to come to the full board.
Right.
So, you know, whether it's two or three or something like that, I think that makes some sense.
Right. Well, I mean, we could, I'm trying to remember why we went to two.
I think it started out that way, didn't it?
Yeah. I mean, if we went to three, it would make it simpler.
But, well, the language too, that I questioned, and I put a change in there, is from an existing parcel. So at first, it said two lots in total. But that, in total, what does that mean? Including the existing?
Right.
Or not including the existing? So.
Right. So I think that's.
I think that clarifies it.
That's right. That's where we got the two lots, then. We're not coming to the existing.
That was, actually, the two was already in there.
Okay.
Oh, was that the intent? So you have the, what I'll call the parent lot, plus two new lots? Is that the idea for this?
Just clarifying, yeah.
Yes. Okay. Got it. Okay.
So that's good. Looks like that, the way that is.
Yeah.
Yes.
Everybody okay with that?
My other set of questions were, so you added sketch plan review, which is fine. And I noticed that that's suggested but not required. That's good. I think, I think that's good. A question I had was, I think the, that table one where we sort of list out the application requirements, that's kind of been your question too. We may, we should probably relook at that, and you may want to add a column for sketch plan and review applications. Is that what you would like to do, or do you want to leave it separate?
Well, I mean, if we put it in, it might make things clearer for people.
Yeah.
I don't think we would need it for a minor. If a major subdivision is coming, of course, that might be, depends on when they come in. Like, if they're coming in with a plan, if it's a major, I mean, it would be good to have a sketch plan ready, be kind of more efficient for the applicant.
I think the way we discussed it was the sketch plan regardless would be brought to probably the administrator, I think. And then he would determine where it would go from there.
Right. That's right.
So, you know, I still feel like this, this is like a lot of language here. And if there's any way that we can condense this and make it simpler for people to understand with the same intent, that would be great.
So for my benefit, I can play with the language if you'd like. So sketch plan is optional, correct? Is that what you want? Or do you, or do you want to make it a required step?
Probably, now that you've mentioned.
I think it's the first step.
Yeah.
Required.
Yeah.
So it's required.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
And you'd mentioned it going to the administrative officer first. Do you want the administrative officer to be able to make the determination on the sketch plan? Or do you want that to come to the planning commission? Or that really depends on the size of the project? Is that the way to look at that?
Well, I think we're requiring a sketch plan for any minor or major.
Okay.
That would go to the, well, I guess initially.
Go to you? I get, I mean, they're going to give the application to the administrative officer.
Right.
But do you have to review all of them? Well, I'm assuming if it's a minor, the administrative officer could probably review it. That's right.
Yes.
Okay.
It'd just be up to his determination whether it needs to come in front of us.
That's right.
If it's complicated.
Yeah, okay. Got it. Got it? And then, do you want me to add a column? I, I'm volunteering myself. Do you want us to add a column for the application requirement table for sketch plan?
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Okay.
It'd be, kind of make things clear.
And make it a little simplified.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And when, when we started the conversation initially, way back, we were trying to keep it really simple, just one subdivision review process, and that changed. We added the minor and major. And then you're adding sketch plan, which is all good. But I might want to tweak, my suggestion would be, you added the sketch plan language here in the application requirements. I might try to shorten this a little bit, and then I might want to add a little bit more on page, like, either nine, where we, you talk about minor subdivision, the process, major subdivision, the process. We might want to add just a little short blurb of what that sketch plan process looks like. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
And keep, try to keep it as short as possible.
Hmm. That's right.
Yep. That was, I think my questions. Does everything else look okay to everybody? Are you got any other questions you want to talk with me about?
Well, let's, yeah, on the subdivision application requirements, I'm looking at under 2.4B for a minor. It's a statement of compliance with the town plan. I mean, what do people think about that? Do you think that's necessary? There's also, well, Vermont A and R permit navigator results. I'm thinking about people who have no ability to, or don't have a computer.
Right.
I mean, they're, they're pretty easy to download, but.
So one assumption that I'm making.
Yes.
And it's a big assumption, we haven't worked out any of these details, is maybe through our office, we could beat your administrative officer, perhaps?
Yes.
If that's the case.
Please.
As the administrative officer, you know, there's certain state rules we need to follow. And we do want to make sure that we are informing people, you need to talk to the state about what permits you need and that sort of a thing. One of the things we could help them through is that permit navigator thing. And, you know, I think that would just be part of that job.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, I don't think that's a huge lift, because I think we just help them through that.
Well, that would be great.
Sort of, I'm thinking about those requirements.
Is there a process to get you as the administrator, or your office as an administrator?
We need, we need to talk a little bit more. We talked a little bit with the town manager about it, and in concept, he's good with it. The select board would need to set some fees for this stuff, and we'd need to talk about, you know, what's the cost? We just need to come to some arrangement on that. I'm imagining this is not a ton of hours, and so the cost is not huge. If you get a big application, that might be something else, and so we might want to set the fees accordingly. But we haven't figured out any of those details.
Right.
So I'm making assumptions that that might be how, how this works, but that is what we talked about in concept.
Okay. Now, would that require a vote from your board to do this, or do you have authority to?
We, more than likely, there's a pretty small contract. I would let the board know about it, and they wouldn't need to necessarily approve it. But it's something I would bring up with them, and I think it's pretty doable.
Oh, that, that would be great.
It really depends on the details, but I think that would be a way to, if this passes, if you want us to, I think we could make that arrangement.
Okay. Because I know, you know, especially with small towns, it's really difficult to find an administrator than to have consistency where your office could provide that consistency and.
So whether it's us, or whether it is a multi-town person, like, there are some options that we can explore, but I think we can make, we can help make that work.
Okay. Well, that's, that's great. Okay.
I have a question. Do you currently do that for any other towns?
Currently, no. We have, we've done interim zoning administration work for Windsor and Weathersfield in the past. We're not currently doing it at all, but we could, you know, if asked, we could certainly do that.
One concern I have, and it was brought to my attention by the chair of the planning commission for Mount Holly, is the legal aspect. They're in the process also of redoing their subdivision regulations, and his words were that every application comes right along with a lawsuit. So.
Okay.
For me, that's a concern for the town. I know our budget is $7,000 for legal fees for the entire year. So if it becomes a problem, I just, you know, a small town like this can't sustain any.
Yep. There's always a chance of appeals.
Yeah.
You know, it could happen. I don't think it happens a lot, that I'm aware of, but it could happen, absolutely. So, you know, it is something to think about. Enforcement's not easy either. And if this is adopted, it's new, it may take a little bit to get people to follow it. So there could be a few, you know, it's always a possibility.
Did that, did he give any kind of background information on why they were getting sued?
Well, their, their plan has not been updated for some time.
Okay.
It wasn't, there were things in there that weren't, for example, one thing he said, for example, like, it did not even require any sort of a plat or plan for the subdivision. It was, you know, there were some holes and some things missing. But I can ask him.
Okay, I'd be interested.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know.
Yeah.
But he did say one of the better aspects of it was the sketch plan review. Because it saves the applicant money and lets, kind of lets the town know what they're doing, you know, before they spend too much money on permits and, and, you know, formalized drawings and et cetera.
That's correct, yeah. I mean, it's only the communication end that's really important.
Yeah.
You know, so just so you don't get to a point where, you know, they spent all this money and then we say no. It'd be good to say, well, we don't like this upfront, and then they could make modifications if they so choose. You know, for a larger subdivision. So, yeah, that's a risk we take. Okay. Moving on, is there? I think one thing I see would change is on our page 13, section 2.6, major subdivision It says, "Each approval for a final subdivision plan and associated plat shall contain a time limit with which all improvement shall be completed, not to exceed."
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what other bylaws say. I don't remember off the top of my head. We can look at that. In most cases, there's probably not a lot of improvements, bigger projects, there might very well be roads and sewer line extensions or whatever. And that could certainly take time. One of the things we can do if it's a bigger project, and if that's a problem, is they could phase it, or they could.
Phase it.
Things like that. So, you know, that could be something that just gets fleshed out through the review process, if that's going to be a problem for folks. But yeah, you change it from one year to two, which I think that's fine. I think that's fine. You know, something else we could consider doing is, you know, maybe you, you could enable the administrative officer, if you want, maybe they could extend it another year or whatever, if needed, or something, you know, we could add that kind of language in either the decision or in the, in this document here.
Yeah, based on, you know, a plan for phasing it in. If we could have some kind of language saying that if it is going to be a phased-in project, you know, a rough timeline, I guess, for phase one.
And after the last couple of years, you know, maybe you do want more time. Sometimes it's just forever to get the pipe delivered and, you know, these other things. So maybe more time is better.
Yeah.
And the ability to extend it further might also be a good idea.
That's right. Yeah, I think the ability to extend it would be good to incorporate.
Would that be just a quick, like, a quick application extended? Or would it be something they have to bring back in front of us and say, hey, I need more time here, this is the reasons why, can you extend this?
I mean, if there, if there wasn't any material change to the plans, like, we could go to, maybe just go through the administrative?
That's what I'm thinking, just keep it easy.
Yeah.
You know? And if there's something funky about it, maybe the administrative officer can bring it to you or something. But I think in most cases that, yeah, here's another year.
Mm-hmm. And then we had a whole thing on 3.2 subdivision standards, the dogleg C. Curious what you thought of that.
It looks like you really just reworded it to be, you know, perhaps more clear in your eyes or something, which is fine. I think it's fine.
We copied it from Green Tree? No, somewhere.
I guess, you know, the one question I had was on B. I guess it makes sense. I hadn't really thought through the, you know, sideline lines perpendicular 90% thing. I hadn't really thought through that, whether that makes sense or not, but I guess that's my one question. I haven't really given that a, I'm not sure. I think the point is you're just trying to have some regularly shaped lots, and you're setting some parameters for what that looks like.
Right.
Which makes sense.
Right. And, you know, they can be, there is the ability of the planning commission to kind of have a little leeway with that, too.
Yeah. So. Yeah, there's that waiver provision.
That's right.
We had moved it, which is fine. So that allows you to kind of tweak that if needed.
Yeah. The waiver, I think, is good if it's in the front, so, so people see that upfront.
Yeah.
Instead of at the end.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, so that does give you quite a lot of flexibility, actually, so.
Okay. That may have been it.
Page 22, that's, oh, that's, it was just a change of putting the waiver front instead of back.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
One thing I don't think we've addressed in here, and we talked about it, was raw land, division of raw land. You know, as far as having a subdivision plan, if you're just subdividing something for somebody to develop down the road, you know, carving out 10, 20 acres, you know, what are the requirements there as far as what we have here?
You know, I'm assuming that we're going to go through the same process as laid out in here, but, you know, they can always waive things, like, that doesn't apply in this case, that doesn't apply in this case. And that would be up to you all to say, yeah, I agree. Most cases, I don't like seeing new lots created where there's no access or, you know, no ability for future utilities or whatever. So I want to see at least some discussion of those kinds of issues. But yeah, I think, you know, we're trying to be fairly simple with the standards, and, you know, you can argue whether we hit that mark, but again, that waiver provision will really allow you to kind of skip over anything that doesn't apply. So that, I hope that answers your question. Is that adequate now?
Okay. So I think we've kind of gone through them here. Anybody have anything on the definitions? I mean, that looked pretty straightforward. And again, I mean, once we, there'll still be time to modify these after, you know, two hearings.
It's still a draft.
Still a draft.
Until it is.
Until it gets voted on.
So what's your, is that your schedule? I'll try to, shouldn't take a huge amount of time, but it's also busy, so I just want to try to figure out what your.
Sure.
What your hope is with the schedule.
Well, we're hoping, planning on having another open forum, like, I think in like the third week of April.
Okay.
And if that's possible to have them.
Yep.
Done. I mean, the third week, if that, when's school vacation? I'm so out of touch with that. Maybe Ed, you might know.
You'd think, you would think I know.
Yeah.
You know, Miguel? Sorry, school vacation for, what, April?
Oh, it's, the, because we're actually going on vacation, so, I know, I haven't. So spring break for Green Mountain High School is the 14th through the 18th.
Okay.
Is their spring break.
So after that, the week after, you guys want to just set a date right now?
Sure.
So 18th, that's a Friday. We could do it the following week? Anytime from the 21st to the 25th, like, middle of the week on a Wednesday?
6:30.
6:30. Does that work for you, Jason? Is that, or do you want to attend?
My schedule, that is far out, is pre-opened.
I mean, would you like to attend, or?
If I could be helpful with answering questions, I can attend, but whatever works best for you all.
If you could, that would be.
Okay.
Yeah, we can kind of do the heavy lifting, the presenting, and kind of going over the changes we made, so.
Sure.
Did you say the 23rd at 6:30?
23rd, yes. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay. And then, then thinking ahead, let's assume there's not a lot of changes. We could do like a planning commission hearing, May or June even. And then send it to the select board sometime in the fall. And have plenty.
Like a target?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Then there's plenty of time, so, you know, the select board wouldn't have their hearings during budget season. You know, the dealing would be October, maybe November. And then, I'm assuming it would go to a town vote, town meeting day. Because we probably won't meet in August. That's always a tough time for people. So, so anyway, yeah, that's, I think, a good schedule.
All right, so I'll try to get you some changes by the end of this, this month.
Okay.
Like, if you have enough time to review them before.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, because we could even, yeah, at our next meeting, we could go over them again, just to kind of finalize them. Okay, great. Does anybody have any other items on that discussion?
No.
Okay. Anything else, Jason?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Looks, looks good, other than what we talked about.
Great. Oh, yeah, one thing, I got another note, Greven Field. Is your office working with?
Yep.
Is that something the planning commission wants to kind of be a part of? Kind of like, I'm not sure, maybe, what, do you know what's going on in terms of?
I know enough to be dangerous. So some staff in our office are working with Rick and others on an application for Greven Field. The idea being essentially applying for, I think it's the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. I have to double check on that. To basically demolish the field, excavate a little bit to increase flood storage, and restore it as a natural area. And so they're working on an application for that. And I don't recall the details. It's, deadlines are coming up fairly soon, so I'm not, they might have a, I think they had a soft application deadline really soon. And so we may get some feedback from the state on that, and then we might need to make some changes. So again, I don't know the timeline, or whether there's time for the planning commission to. So again, I don't know the timeline or whether there's time for the planning commission to chime in, but it is being worked on as we speak.
Okay, all right. I can get more info from Rick too. Okay. I guess that's it. This is great. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jason.
Yeah.
No problems. Happy to help.
Yeah, we always appreciate it. Okay, item six, nominations. We have a chair, vice chair, secretary, representative, Mark, and an alternate for Mark. They're all one year. So basically, somebody can nominate somebody for each position, get a second and then a vote. So we can go chair first. If anybody's interested in doing it, I'm open or I'll do it for another year.
I nominate Tim.
Okay, well, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Okay, vice chair, Bruce is not here. I did reach out to him with an email. He hasn't gotten back to me, but.
Can I nominate him if he's not here?
Sure.
Second.
Okay. I'll wait for Miguel to catch up. Secretary for one year. Miguel, you're doing a great job. Is that something you'd be interested in another year?
So I don't, I wasn't sure if it was, I was to address this in other business or something, but I wanted to let the planning commission know in person that this will be my last meeting. I'm going to step down and step away for a little bit. So I apologize for not giving you a heads up to you as the chair, but wasn't sure if there was going to need to be a, a letter. I'm sure there is. I'll have to submit a letter or something. But yeah, this will be my last meeting. Just wanted to step away for a little bit.
Okay.
I want to come back, but.
Yep.
Right now, we're pretty busy.
Sure. No, I understand. Sorry to hear it, but I understand.
It's not a sad thing. It's just, you know, I enjoyed the time that I had. It is a very, there is a time commitment thing to it. So, but hope to be back.
Okay.
Good.
All right. Okay, so that leaves an opening then for secretary. Is there anybody interested? Make a motion?
I'm not interested.
I'll do it.
Good.
Okay.
I nominate you.
Nice, Mark. Thank you. My typing is not good.
Okay, second.
Uh, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Representative to Mark Shirley, are you interested in still doing it?
I'm happy to be there.
That's great. Appreciate it. All right, we'll make, someone make a motion to nominate Shirley.
I nominate Shirley.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alternate, I guess that's something I could do to Mark.
I nominate Tim as alternate.
Okay, second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we got through that. Old business, new business. I don't believe, well, Fletcher Fields. They're on target to start phase one this spring. They've, Lowly Area Sport Trails has gone for a recreational trails program grant. It's funded from, through the federal government by the state. So the, there is talk of maybe that money being clawed back, we were told. We'll just have to wait and see. So, but either way, something will, will happen there, so, for sure. And that's about all I have. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, second.
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.